Order the meeting of the City Commission, Monday, February 11th, 2019. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, has the role been taken?
It has. All are present tonight, except for Commissioner LaLonde, who is absent.
Manager Ridley, would you like to proceed with the proclamations and presentations?
Yes, our first presentation this night is our city engineer, Stacy Toir, is here tonight, so she can introduce for you our new geographic information system specialist, Stefan Boz. So if you'd like to come up and do the introduction, Stacy?
Can you hear me? Okay. We're pleased to announce that Stefan Boz joined the engineering staff on January 7th. Stefan comes to us from Father and Son Home Improvement, where he was a general contractor's assistant. And prior to that, he was a GIS intern for the Village of Buffalo Grove Planning and Zoning Commission. Stefan received a bachelor's degree in environmental science with a minor in atmospheric and oceanic sciences from the University of Colorado at Boulder. A master's degree in geoscience with a concentration in applied meteorology from Mississippi State University. And a graduate certificate in geographic information analysis from Northern Illinois University. We're happy to welcome aboard in the DPW staff.
Can you do anything about the weather that's coming tonight?
And our next presentation tonight is to continue our ongoing process of having departmental presentations once a month. Our presentation this month will be by our human resources director, Suzanne Gandy. So Suzanne's going to go over the HR department for about 10 minutes with you.
Thank you for everyone coming out to listen about the HR department tonight. I appreciate you all showing up for this. It's very exciting. I'd like to thank the commission for the opportunity to talk about the department. There's a lot of things that we do behind the scenes, and I hope I can shed a little light on those things tonight for you. We have four individuals in our department. Laura Veldheis, who is our senior executive assistant. She has been with the city just shy of 11 years. She plans to retire April of this year, and so we are just finishing up the hiring process to replace that position. She handles many of the day-to-day troubleshooting items. Customer service when folks come into the office, handles applicants, and completely handles the paperwork onboarding process for all of our seasonal employees. Which can vary on any year, but at times can reach almost 160, 170 people between elections and all of our seasonal staff. So it keeps her quite busy. We will miss her greatly. Jamie Raymond is our payroll specialist. She handles our electronic timesheet program and our payroll system. Also, our online system that gives access to employees to all of their information. She's been with the city just under two and a half years, and she's been a great asset. She filled some pretty big shoes after one of our staff retired, but Jamie's been great with the department. And then Shar Rapun is our human resources consultant. Shar's been with the city just under seven years. She recently completed her master's in human resources at CMU, and so now we all have to call her Master Shar. But she really handles the majority of the benefit plans. She deals with all of the insurance issues and all of our safety. She is our safety officer and oversees our Safety Alliance Committee. And then I'm closing out 18 years here with the city. I'll be starting my 19th year in May. And I started as the generalist. I've moved into the director role in 2012. I handle recruitment, hiring, policy development, and really the liaison between staff and management in trying to solve problems and find solutions. These are some main responsibilities of the human resources department. Many of them I just touched on. But all of those things, even though we have some specialty areas, the staff, all of us work together in order to achieve anything. And you can see the puzzle piece down there at the bottom. That, for the city staff, is our symbol that reminds us of how we all play a part in a bigger picture. There's actually a quote on this one that we are each a piece of a very elaborate puzzle that must fit together to provide the variety of services expected from us. And in HR, we take that very seriously. So when we're hiring a process, let's say for a new GIS specialist, we're not only looking for the person who has the talent to do the job, but also the person who's going to fit with the department and help us grow to be a better organization. So we feel very fortunate in HR that we get to be a component of all the hiring, and we know the employees in all departments. It's kind of sad when someone comes into a department, and then we have a city event, and they say, "Oh, I haven't met that employee from the other department." Because we get to meet all of them and see the big picture. And I wish we had more opportu- excuse me, more opportunity for our folks to get together and understand the roles of all the departments a little bit more. One of the interesting things about the city is that we do have five unions. So we have one group of employees, which is our administrative and our management group. And then we have our POEM group, which represents police officers. Our COEM group, which is the command officers. We have the POLC group, which is our full-time fire staff. And then we also have a POCF, which is our paid-on-call-fire, and our TPOEM, which is all of our technical, water, wastewater, office professionals, code enforcement, and street department. And collectively, again, these groups are who make up the city services. And we have a wonderful relationship with our unions. Pretty much our bargaining agreements are laid out as a set of rules for those folks, but we have a great relationship with all of them. Just to give you some stats on our recruitment, this is from 2018. We ran 20 different hiring processes for either full-time or part-time individuals. Now, many of those get filled internally because people can bid on those positions, so people shift around in their jobs. And it can take us, at times, up to three months to fill a position. But our employee count breaks down at about 120 full-time employees, one part-time employee, 16 paid-on-call-fire, seven elected officials, 80-plus employees within the peak in the seasonal maintenance, and as well as 70-plus election workers, depending on the year, and what kind of election we have going on. In 2018, at our highest point, we had 311 employees on payroll. And the four individuals that I introduced to you in the beginning helped get all those folks on-boarded, get them into the departments, hired them, got their payroll set up, got all of their benefits set up, and then continued to troubleshoot problems for them throughout their employment with us. One of the things that I spend time on is our labor management committees. With each of our collective bargaining agreements, we have a group of folks in each one of those employee groups that get together and resolve issues, work on interpreting the language in the contract if issues evolve. And so we work through those things on a monthly or bimonthly basis, so that when we get to the table for negotiations, which is about once a year, depending on the group, we have, we can really focus on an interest-based process. So we're looking at things that we want to collectively and collaboratively work together with to resolve. So that has been another way that we've stayed connected with our folks and make sure that we're taking care of the little stuff, so it doesn't become a really big issue. One of the things we do is the benefit administration. The city operates a self-funded plan, which means we design, administer, manage, and implement our own plan. We don't work with a large insurance company to handle those benefits for all the employees. But as that, with that self-funded plan, comes some additional responsibility in the fact that the HR team, as well as the finance team, partner together to make sure that we're on top of any legislative changes, and our plan is compliant with all federal legal regulations. At this time, we have about 387, what I call belly buttons on our plan. So that would be our employees, our dependents, our retirees. So we have about three, excuse me, 387 individuals on our plan right now. And we also handle all of their issues or claims problems in partnership with our broker. And then planning for the future, one of the biggest things we have facing us is an aging workforce. Our current age, average age is 47 and a half years old. Most of those folks have over 10 years of service, and we have about 30% of our staff who can retire. So going forward, staffing will be, will continue to take a large amount of time out of the HR departments in our goals. And trying to find the right people to fill those positions and transfer the knowledge, both institutional and technical knowledge, to those new hires, I really think will be critical for the success of the city going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Thank you, Suzanne.
And then our last presentation this evening is from Taylor Brooke, who is the watershed outreach coordinator from the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe. And she's going to give you a brief presentation on the storm drain painting project that is later on your agenda.
Thank you for having me this evening. Like I said, I work with the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe, and through my position, I work with the City Parks and Recreation Department quite a bit on types of watershed issues, and specifically, a lot of education and outreach. And so we came across this idea of doing a storm drain painting project. And as a lot of you probably know, the Chippewa River has a decent amount of pollution in it. And I don't think that's because people don't care about the river that it's getting polluted, but it's because people don't necessarily understand the impacts that they have on the river. So we were hoping to do a storm drain painting project to raise awareness for the fact that all the water and anything else that goes down the storm drains goes right into the river. A lot of people think that that goes off to the wastewater treatment plant or gets filtered somehow, but a lot of it just goes into the river, and that's where we end up with a lot of our pollution. So in your packets, you have an article, I think, the city of Dayton, Ohio, that's done a similar project, and there's been many done across the country. And that article, they brought in local artists to design these storm drain murals. But we were thinking about doing something a little bit more simple that could be easily touched up if maintenance was needed, and to make it a family project. So we thought about maybe doing stencils in some of the parks around the city. And we'd probably start with maybe Island Park as a pilot project and kind of see how it goes, how it needs to be maintained in the future. And with having those stencils, like I said, maintenance would be easier, and we could, you know, make it an event where families can come out and learn about our local water resources. So some of the other things we looked at using environmentally friendly paints, too, that aren't going to cause pollution to the water, and those sorts of aspects, so. We hope to do the project. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Yeah.
We keep getting comments about more salt on the street. Got to get rid of that ice. Have you got any information on the effect of salt on the Chippewa River?
Our water quality monitoring program does monitor for those sorts of chemicals. But we just started, we have a rigorous monitoring program going back to 2009. We started in 2004. So you could see the differences potentially between the summer and the winter. But we, we've been using salt the entire time that we've been monitoring, so there wouldn't be like a before and after in that sense.
You've got a summer and winter, or spring when you get the big runoff coming.
Yeah, we definitely see a lot more of all the contaminants in the spring especially. And we're working on reducing pollution and educating homeowners and, you know, the people that are going out and putting the salt on the streets. It's kind of a new emerging issue, even with like softening your water at home. It's basically the same process, and we're taking it, hard water out of the ground, and then putting soft water back into the environment. So even that whole process is being affected in several different ways, so.
John, we don't use salt to soften the city water, do we?
No. But we're cognizant of the fact that salt is one of those things, you don't want to get in the river, and it's a trade-off. That has not been one of the big pollutants that we've been chasing in the river at this point.
Yeah, it's kind of just an emerging thing that people are starting to think about and really look into, so.
Well, thank you. It's a great collaboration between us and Saginaw-Chippewa Tribe, and it's obviously going to help the river and everyone who uses it.
Great, thank you.
Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda? Vice Mayor Gillis?
Yes, I have an addition to the agenda. I would like to present a temporary postponement of the medical marijuana lottery for provisioning centers for additional research, evaluation, and discussion by the City Commission to create a more honorable and equitable way of distributing the limited licenses available. The loophole that exists in our current ordinances may create a monopoly for this industry, and in my opinion, is essentially selling our licenses to the highest bidder and to the applicant with the deepest pocketbook. I do not believe this serves our community or the patients, and do not believe this was the intent of the commission at the time the ordinance was adopted. I provide, I propose these four options to explore a more equitable system of distributing provisioning center licenses. Number one, a meeting with our new attorney for his advice on eliminating this loophole. Number two, an opportunity for our two new commissioners to give their opinion on the current system and alternate views they may have. Number three, a discussion on granting each unique entity one license for one provisioning center that applied before the February 1st deadline, so as to level the playing field for the small business entrepreneurs. And a discussion, number four, a discussion exploring the options of no limits for provisioning centers, like many other municipalities have adopted, and allowing the marketplace to work as intended.
Is there a second from Vice Mayor Gillis's motion?
I second. I'm sorry, Mayor, are you, is this just to add it to the agenda, is what you're talking about, not the motion itself, right?
Right.
Okay.
Any discussion? Commissioner Ling?
First, I'd just like a clarification of exactly what vote we'll need in order to be able to put this on the agenda.
To add to the agenda, we need a supermajority, so five votes.
Even though there's not one, there's not a person here, we still will need five. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Commissioner Ling?
I'm not going to support doing in addition to the agenda, some ways for a lot of the same reasons that I gave when we added an item in December. I think this is a very significant issue with a lot of potential legal implications, and I would be very uncomfortable with adding it to the agenda for potential action at this stage of the game, so I'm not going to support this.
Commissioner Kulik?
I will not be supporting this either. We've spent the better part of a year discussing this, battling this out, coming up with the process that we had. The attorney advised us that this was our best option, and I'm going to stick by his legal advice.
Vice Mayor Gillis?
Thank you for allowing me to at least ask to have this motion added to the agenda. I would like us to be a representative of all our community members. I think the addition of this on the agenda might give us some options that we could be looking at with the 57 applicants, or 50, I shouldn't say, applications, not individual entities, that asked for a license. And the way they went about using multiple addresses to increase their odds for this lottery, I had mentioned this loophole before, last year, when we voted on this at the beginning of 2018. And I think it's our duty to make amends to this ordinance so that that loophole doesn't exist. So I would hope that you would reconsider.
I'd just like to comment that I think the first and foremost thing is that medical marijuana patients are the ones that we're trying to serve with this ordinance. And in doing so, we had to collaborate with commissioners last year and our ad hoc committee. And everyone had different views on, you know, what was the ideal way to regulate this new business. And to really come together, we had to make compromises. And as if, if you attended those meetings, you would know that me and Commissioner Gillis and others didn't support the lottery and didn't support putting limits on provisioning centers. But unfortunately, we were in the minority, and this is the law that we came up with as a group. And now we have to move forward to give access to those medical marijuana patients who have serious debilitating diseases, and also protect the city's interests. Frankly, if we backpedal now, we open ourselves up to litigation, and I think that's one of my most important responsibilities, is to protect this organization. And so I will not be supporting this motion as well. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor of adding this to the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
And those not?
No.
Nay? Motion fails.
Who was for? I didn't, two for? Okay.
Now is our public input on agenda items. This is your time to come to the dais. If you have comment on anything that is on the agenda. We have a later public comment section for things that are not on the agenda. You have five minutes, and please state your name and your address.
My name is Caleb Carey. My address is 5590 South Crawford Road, Mount Pleasant, Michigan. I would like to talk about the lottery on Wednesday, the 13th. I don't know if it's necessarily part of the agenda, although I see on number 11 its correspondence received regarding medical marijuana licensing, so. Anyway, Deborah Carey is one of the ones with the property in the lottery, and she is my mother. She was born and raised in Mount Pleasant, graduated from Sacred Heart, has been a local taxpayer since the 70s. She's worked as decades as a medical healthcare professional. But because of the lottery's format, she's been statistically marginalized from obtaining a municipal license from the town she grew up in. When lottery was formed, it was formed with the idea of fairness. Be pre-qualified, we'll cap it at three, three shops, three grows, et cetera. This sounds fair, except an entity can turn in an indefinite amount of properties to increase their chance of winning. These entities obtain these properties with a contingency of getting a license. Also, the application fee is refunded if they don't get a winning ticket. This means these entities can push out other entities without really truly investing themselves. If they don't get it, the property was never theirs, and the application fund fee is refunded. It's not fair to give an entity an advantage just because the city holds on to their money, and they promise different property owners that if they get a ticket, they will get paid. Even the mayor has shown concerns when the rules were being made because he thought people may be excluded, although he was outvoted. Could you imagine for any other business such a system, where there's a cap of three drugstores, and Mission Drugstore had to go in against Walgreens and CVS with 10 properties each? Or Gilroy's against Home Depot and Menards? Let small businesses have a true opportunity to compete. Some of the other entities may say to have the lottery happen for the sake of expediency for patients' access sake. If this is the more reason to choose entities that have a finished building that can be ready for operation sooner than an empty lot thrown in a lottery to help them hedge their bets. You must stop the lottery as it is, come up with fair rules. This commission has power to do so now without delaying the lottery. According to regulatory ordinance, the ordinance can be changed or adjusted on or before December of 2019. This may seem like an 11th-hour solution. I know you guys debated this for a year, but to be honest, we didn't know there was a problem until the 11th hour. Most of the filings occurred on the deadline, and this is the first meeting since the deadline. The most pragmatic solution, in my opinion, would be to limit the number of properties to one per entity. This is not only fair, but only properties that are closest operational will be chosen by the entities. This will allow patients to access medicine sooner than waiting for an empty lot to be ready. Thank you.
My name is Deb Carey, and I was the one who asked to have this put on the agenda to get a second look, basically because I do feel it as a taxpaying citizen that I was kind of betrayed and wah-wah, okay? But still, it is, you know, for a small community that puts so much emphasis on small businesses to stack the deck against small businesses, it's just not right. And so I am really asking that you take a second look, and maybe when Commissioner LaLonde is able, that you could get a commissioner meeting together, when you actually have all the meetings, all the members there, to get a decent vote. So I have placed an injunction due to a procedural flaw in your lottery to give new members a chance to have some time to contribute in lieu of what actually happened on the 11th hour, which is basically people coming in and making the lottery unfair. Maybe there's things that just shouldn't have to be said. What are these, you worried about a lawsuit? What are they going to say? We came in at this 11th hour and tried to make this lottery tilted and unfair in our advantage by going in and pushing, pushing our way through? Is that, how's that going to stand up in a jury trial? This is an opportunity just to do the right thing for the right reason. We talked, Will. What did you say? You said if the standing room only, then you would have to take a look. But you shouldn't have to do the right thing because you got an angry mob. You should do the right thing behind closed doors. Make Mount Ple- people are looking to Mount Pleasant for some leadership. Make Mount Pleasant be the place to do, look what they did it right, instead of, boy, we don't want to do what Mount Pleasant did. Put Mount Pleasant on the map with a good feel for new businesses, and not to let a big corporation with deep pockets come in and buy the lottery. Thank you for your consideration.
Is there anyone else who would like to make public comment on agenda items? Seeing no one step forward, I will close this section of the public comment. Moving on to receipts of petitions and communications. Would the city manager like to go through them?
Yes, the items before you this evening on this section of the agenda are the report on pending items, the November minutes of the Parks and Recreation Commission, the December minutes of the Airport Advisory Board, the fourth quarter investment report, and then the documentation of the resignation of Anne Swift from the Board of Review. We verbally shared that information. verbally shared that information with you earlier so that the Appointments Committee had time to find a replacement. And as a matter of fact, that's one of your agenda items later, but here's the formal resignation in your packet. And then you had a correspondence from Mr. Jeff Jakeway regarding medical marijuana in the downtown. You had a correspondence from Greg Travis on North Vancher Street regarding the snow and ice on city streets. And then the correspondence from Deb Carey regarding the medical marijuana licensing. And then today, we've received a communication from Dave McGuire, which is on your packet tonight, and his communication is in regard to the licensing process as well.
Commissioner Kulik.
Could we, the, the vehicle, bicycle, pedestrian accident data, could we move that item to a future work session just to have some discussion on it?
Is there any objections?
I've got a note of it.
Okay. Is there a date by Commissioner Kulik that you'd like to discuss?
No, no, it's just, you know, we asked for this data, we've got this data, now what do we want to do with it? What does it tell us? What doesn't it tell us? Is it something that we should continue to gather data for? You know, 15-minute work session, I think, will, you know, kind of resolve that issue.
Okay. Commissioner Gillis, Vice Mayor Gillis.
I was also gonna bring up the accident data report for vehicle, bicycle, and vehicle pedestrians. I say this every year, a former commissioner wanted this to be included in our packets at the beginning of the year, and the problem with this, the statistics, there is no data to say who is at fault. If it was the vehicle that had pulled out in front of a bicycle, or if the bicycle was riding on the sidewalk where they're not supposed to be, if the bicycle was riding in the wrong direction, if the bicycle had no safety reflector bulbs. So, when it was first presented to us that we were gonna start getting this information every year, it was more of a fact of trying to increase the bike lanes around Mount Pleasant, showing how many accidents happen between vehicles and bicycles. But the information, in my opinion, is not statistically correct or, or factual if we don't have the, the final determination of a police officer that was who was, who was at fault. Because these are just accidents that occur, was it the bicycles, the bicyclist fault, or the automobile driver's fault? So, it kind of gives a representation that bicycles are so unsafe on the road, which may be the bicycle riders are so unsafe on the road, because they're not following the rules of the road. So, that has been my problem for the last three years when it's been presented to us, that it isn't, it is incomplete information and gives the wrong representation. On another note, I would like to thank our Director, Laria, for looking into a self-defense class for our community members. I think this is a real need for some of us that may want to participate in that, mostly our young college students and our young high school students, and that may actually come to fruition because of his efforts. So, I appreciate that. Thank you. Director.
Moving on to the consent calendar. Consent calendar items on the agenda that have an asterisk next to them. Is there any items that anyone would like to remove from the consent calendar? Seeing none, Mayor Ridley, would you like to go through the consent, consent calendar items?
Sure. The items we're recommending tonight are the approval of the minutes of your regular meeting of January 7th, and then we have, excuse me, four bids for your consideration this evening. The first one is for the roof restoration at our public safety building, and we're recommending the low bid of CNI Building Maintenance for $49,970, plus a not-to-exceed amount of $2,000 for insulation repairs. And this, although this bidder recommended an alternate type of materials, based on the research we've done, we believe that the alternate is as good as what was originally bid, so we're recommending award of that low bid with the alternate materials. We're recommending the purchase of a Parks Utility Vehicle through the State of Michigan Purchasing Contract. Each year, they bid a number of items for statewide that we can then use those bid results for. So, we're recommending we use that for a purchase of a utility vehicle from Bader &amp; Sons for a price of $14,028, less the trade-in allowance. Although this amount is slightly above what was budgeted for this purchase, the Parks Department has adequate funds within their existing budget to cover it. The third is to recommend the purchase of a mower through the National Contract, and this is the bidder of Spartan Distributors for a cost of $63,501, less the trade-in allowance of $14,000. And then the fourth bid is for a rehabilitation of one of our chemical storage tanks at the water plant. During an inspection last year, we noticed that some of it was starting to corrode, and it can be addressed by relining the tank instead of buying a new one. So, one bid was received, and we're recommending the award of the bid to Plaz Tanks for $21,675. The next item that we're recommending for the consent calendar is to amend our contract with Central Michigan University for the lease of copy machines. We have a number of machines that are already covered under this contract, but in our Treasures Office, we recently had a high-volume printer that failed, and when we started looking at the cost of purchasing a new one, and the ongoing maintenance costs associated with that printer, we've determined that it's actually more cost-effective to just print another, or just to add another printer to the contract at $186 a month, because that covers everything, all of the supplies and toner and everything for the printer, and all we would have to buy is the paper and the staples. So, we're recommending authority to amend the contract with CMU to add one more printer at the cost of $187 a month. The next contract we're recommending be amended is a contract with Row Professional Services for Engineering Design Work. We had authorized, or the City Commission had authorized an agreement with Row to do the engineering for the bypass of our 1 million gallon reservoir at the water plant. The project was bid last year, and only one bidder responded, and the bid price was significantly over budget, so we did not award it. Since that time, one of the valves in the actuator on the reservoir have encountered problems. We always knew they were going to need to be replaced in the upcoming near future, but it would be most cost-effective to do it at the same time that we're doing the bypass. So, we're recommending an amendment to the engineering contract so that Row can do the additional design, update the bid documents, hold the mandatory pre-bid meeting, and bid the project, and evaluate the bids for us. And that amendment would be $3,840. We believe by bidding the project earlier this year, we're more likely to have more interested bidders. And then the last item on the consent calendar is the payrolls and warrants. And you'll note that in the packet, we made a notation that because of the cancellation of the last meeting, there were a number of checks that we had to go ahead and release so that we didn't run into problems with those payments. So, we're asking for confirmation of those checks that were in your last agenda packet, and then authorization for the new checks that are in this packet, and that covers all of the items on the consent calendar.
Commissioner Kulik.
Move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Seconded by Commissioner Gillis, Vice Mayor Gillis. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those not in favor? Motion passes unanimously. So, item 13 is a public hearing. Public hearing for the necessity of a public improvement. Consider Resolution Number Three to proceed with improvement, and Resolution Number Four to accept the special assessment role and set a public hearing for February 25th, 2019, regarding said role for Special Assessment District Number One. At this point, I'd invite anyone to make public comment on the Resolutions Number Three and Four.
Mayor, would you like to give me, me to give a little bit more overview before you do the public comment potentially?
Sure.
Okay. As a reminder, this is a project of installing pedestrian lights on Pleasant, Clayton, Gaylord, and May, and this special assessment process is consistent with how we've handled pedestrian lighting in other areas of the city that we've been doing since 2014. So, the properties that are within our areas that are Zone CD4 are the ones who are subject to the special assessment process. And our special assessment process requires five resolutions, of which you've done the first two. So, your public hearing tonight is primarily to obtain input on the need for the project. And after hearing that public input, then you can move on to deciding whether you want to consider Resolution Three and Four. And Resolution Three would say that you're interested enough in the project to take the next step, and would ask that an assessment role be prepared that shows how the costs would be spread. And as you know, we always do that ahead of time because that's one of the primary questions that comes up in the public hearing. So, that's been done. And so, Resolution Four would set the public hearing for February 25th on that assessment role.
So, I'll open the public hearing now. Is there anyone who would like to make public comment on the special assessment? Seeing none, I will close this public hearing. Commissioner Kulik.
We need two resol, two motions or just one?
One is sufficient.
I move the resolution as presented.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Gillis. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number 17, consider approval of the Storm Dream Painting Pilot Project for Island and Chippewaaters Parks.
As you heard from Ms. Brooks tonight, this is a pilot project to start in the parks, and there's no cost to the city for it. The Parks and Recreation Commission discussed this last fall and supported it, so we're just asking for your formal endorsement for the project as well tonight.
Vice Mayor Gillis.
I move to approve the pilot project for Storm Dream Painting in Chippewaaters Park and Island Park.
Commissioner Kulik.
Support, or second?
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any of those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number 18, consider appointments to the various city boards and commissions as recommended by the Appointments Committee. Would Commissioner Ling like to talk about that?
About the outgoing chairman, the Appointments Committee, since we were finishing this up from last year. We had an opening on the Board of Review because of the resignation that we received earlier in the meeting tonight. And so, the Appointments Committee has a motion that includes both an appointment and also the creation of an alternative position. So, I move that we approve the appointment of Aaron Zimmer to a partial term set to expire on December 31st of 2020, and that we also appoint Ann Swift as an alternate for a term to expire December 31st, 2020.
I second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Those, those are both, I would just mention that for the new Appointments Committee, we do still have two openings that we need to fill. One is on the Material Recovery Facility, the MRF, that deals with recycling, and the other one is on the LDFA, which is a financing authority dealing with the Smart Zone. So, if anybody's interested in either of those, those remain open, or if you happen to know anybody who would be interested, I'd appreciate it if you would encourage them to look at the city's website where those positions are listed, and the information on what would be involved is included on the website. Thanks.
Item number 19 is appointment of city commissioners to city standing and special committees. I'll just go down the list. For Appointments Committee, I have Vice Mayor Gillis as the chair, Commissioner Lalone, and myself. For the Audit Committee, I have Commissioner Tolles, and Commissioner Kulik, and Commissioner Ling as an alternate. For the Central Michigan Center for Recovery, Education, and Wellness, I have Commissioner Perschbacher. For the Charter Committee, I have Commissioner Ling as the chair, Commissioner Kulik, and myself. For the City/CMU Student Liaison Committee, I have Commissioner Tolles and Commissioner Lalone. For the Council of Governments, I have Commissioner Lalone. For the Intergovernmental Liaison Committee is myself and Vice Mayor Gillis. For the International Relations and Sister City Council, I have Commissioner Ling and myself as an alternate. For the Mount Pleasant Area Diversity Council, I have Commissioner Perschbacher. And for the Property Committee, I have Commissioner Kulik as the chair, Commissioner Gillis, or Vice Mayor Gillis, and Commissioner Perschbacher. Does anyone need me to read anything for a second time? I would entertain a motion for approve those appointments.
I don't believe you need a motion. Those are just mayoral appointments per the charter.
Okay. And then for the appointments of city, I guess for item number 20 is the consider appointments of city commissioners to the applicable city boards and commissions. For the EDC and Brownfield Redevelopment Board, I appointed myself and the alternate for Kathy, Commissioner Ling. And then for the PSD Board and the Tifa Board, I appointed myself.
I would mention, Mayor, and those three, you do need a motion and a second and a vote on those.
I'll, I'll be the second. He made, I assume the mayor made the motion.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number 21 is consider to set a special meeting for February 25th, 2019, at 6:00 PM, for a joint meeting between the City Commission and the Planning Commission. Mayor Ridley, would you like to talk about that?
Yeah, I would just mention that annually, annually, that's a hard word, we have this joint meeting with the Planning Commission to review the annual report and to discuss goals for the coming year. Although the goals this year are fairly defined already because of the master plan process and some of the review of the zoning ordinance, we still feel it's beneficial for those two boards to get together and have a discussion. As you can imagine, it's difficult to find a date and time that works for 16 busy volunteers, though. So, as has been our tradition, we've tried to schedule it before a plan, a city commission meeting starts, and hope that the majority of the people can make it during that time. So, the Planning Commission took action at their meeting last week to set this meeting for February 25th at 6:00 o'clock, and we would hold it down here and adjourn in time for your regular meeting to start. And prior to that meeting, you'll receive written copies of the annual report. So, tonight, we're recommending that you also set a special meeting for February 25th at 6:00 so that it can be an official meeting at the City Commission as well.
Commissioner Kulik.
So moved.
Commissioner Gillis? Seconding the motion. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number 22 is to consider a pilot program for the igloo seating in public spaces.
When you came in this evening, I'm sure you couldn't help but notice the igloo that was out in the middle of the parking lot. So, it was So, it was delivered this evening, so you could have a visual to know what it is you are discussing this evening. And basically, the background is, we had a downtown property owner who made a request through our outdoor dining policy to be able to have that structure in place for approximately a month. These type of outdoor seating arrangements are becoming quite popular throughout the state in various cities, and it makes for basically just a fun, unique atmosphere for those people who like to be outside in the colder weather, but yet gives them some warmth within the igloo. So, when the request came to us, we started looking at recommending an amendment to the policy for your consideration, but we quickly realized that there's a number of things that we didn't have any direct experience with, with these igloos. And as we talked to other communities, they really had run into significant issues with them. So, what we decided instead was to recommend that we allow just a one-month pilot program for this, this year, to try it out, and that way, we can see what actually happens, and if it's successful, then we can bring a policy modification to you at that time. The property owner has, understands that he will be responsible for any electricity for it, that he'll be responsible for clearing any snow around the edge of it to help out with that, to make sure that does not become problematic, and would also pay a prorated fee based on our existing fee structure for outdoor dining. So, we're recommending tonight that you approve a one-month pilot program for this, and if it's successful, then we'll bring you a policy amendment for future years.
Commissioner Ling?
I move that we approve the pilot program as presented by the staff.
Commissioner Kulik?
Support, second.
Any discussion? Commissioner Ling?
I would just say, the igloo is certainly an interesting-looking structure. I do think it's a good, I appreciate the fact that the staff decided to present it this way and give it a month trial, rather than trying to rewrite the ordinance until we see exactly how it's going to work. So, I think that was a good approach.
Commissioner Kulik?
The only issue I had with reading the material was the idea of providing the electricity to the igloo. As I understand it, the drop cord will be put across the sidewalk, and then one of those little rubber humpy things put over it. I would feel much more comfortable if the electricity was supplied overhead, so that there's no trip and fall, no issue of that sort. I will be supporting this as presented. I would hope when we, if, I hope it's successful, and I hope if it is successful in future years, that the final policy requires that the power be supplied overhead.
Commissioner Gillis? Vice Mayor Gillis?
In our packet with the descriptions of, of the igloo, one of the statements that stuck out for me was that most of the igloos are on private property. There are only two cities that allow them on public property, Grand Rapids and Detroit. So, most of these igloos are in the owner's private property outside in their deck or in the front of their business. As I understand it, there, there was some discussion about the owner having it in front of a different location on their, on their deck, in front of the gator, blue gator, and I would have no problem with that. My reservation and hesitation is, if this is going to be placed in front of Midori, that the parallel parking on the north side of Broadway and the diagonal parking, parking on the south side of Broadway has many times made a traffic hazard. I use Broadway in the morning, heading east to go to work, and there are plenty of times where vehicles are jetted out into the right-of-way because they didn't pull in close enough to the curb, or they're, they just have one of those long box trucks where their fender is sticking out. So, literally, when I'm traveling east on Broadway after I pass the main intersection, if there is oncoming traffic, there is not enough room for me to stay in my lane when there's oncoming traffic because of the diagonal parking, parking in front of ICU. So, I can think this is creating or could create a traffic hazard. If we put a deck there with an igloo, it will give the impression, even if it isn't over into that westbound lane, if you have someone diagonally parked in front of ICU that hasn't pulled all the way up, or has a long bed truck, you are making a traffic hazard, and it would be unsafe for the people that may be in the igloo at whatever time they're going to be using that, for people to maneuver around that area. I also have reservations about this because we do not allow people to park on streets. They can't park in front of their house. They couldn't even pay $30 a month to park in front of their house. We aren't given that option. In the winter months, we have to remove all our vehicles from the roads during nighttime so that Public Works can plow in the downtown area. So, we are going to accommodate a deck for seating for a restaurant, and our plows can maneuver around this deck and, and make extra effort to plow that portion of our road, yet no vehicle can park there. Nobody that lives in any of the upstairs apartments, they can't park on the road. They're not allowed. They can't even pay $30 a month to park and have that parking space reserved. So, although I love the idea, I think it would work out great in front of the blue gator, my reservations are that it's going to be a traffic hazard. I am worried about the occupants inside the igloo, and I'm also concerned about DPW and the extra time that they are going to have to take to clear snow around a deck that is being allowed on our parking space, on our Broadway street, where no other vehicles are allowed. So, I will be voting no. But I'd love to see it in front of the blue gator.
I would just like to comment that when this came before us in our agenda meeting, that DPW and public safety were both consulted, and they felt comfortable with this idea. And it is a pilot program, and there may be unforeseen consequences, but at this point, city staff felt very comfortable that this could be a successful project, and obviously, it could, you know, help enrich our downtown, bring people out to some of our local restaurants. And so, you know, we'll see in a month how it goes, but Commissioner Kulik?
There's more reasons why we don't permit parking on the downtown streets beyond just the snow removal issue. When that no overnight parking in the downtown went into effect, it was to a large extent due to the fire department's concern that if they have to fight a fire downtown and there's cars parked up and down the street, it's going to create a tremendous problem for them. This deck and this igloo, I'm sorry, is not going to be a problem. If they need to lay hose across it, I'm sorry, the igloo's flattened and Mr. Swindellhurst is out, whatever the thing cost him, that's not going to be an issue that it would be if, if cars were parked down there. I'm still in favor of this for a trial situation.
All those in favor of the?
I have one more question. I didn't know if anybody else had any more comments. The liability, what, insurance is going to be paid for by the business owner, so there will be no liability in case a snowplow were to slide into the deck, into somebody, or if a vehicle was traveling too fast down Broadway and there was a accident and something were to happen, we will not be held liable?
Just like with our outdoor dining policy, the property owner has to have a liability insurance policy that names the city as an additional insured, so that will continue in this situation as well.
Commissioner Ling?
I appreciate Vice Mayor Gillis bringing up some concerns that I think probably do need to be looked at. I think that's one of the advantages of having this as a pilot for thirty days, so that we can see. And I would hope that those, the issues that were mentioned would be ones that we would look at, so that when we look at whether or not we're going to make this a permanent policy, we will have addressed some of those.
Is there any more discussion? All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
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 Aye. Those not in favor?
Nay.
Motion passes four-two. Item twenty-two or twenty-three is to consider a closed session pursuant to subsection 8C of the Open Meetings Act for strategy and negotiation sessions connected with the negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement. Commissioner Kulik?
So moved.
Commissioner Ling? Jeremy, would you like to take the vote?
Okay.
Yeah.
Commissioner Kulik?
Yes.
Commissioner Lalonne is absent. Commissioner Ling?
Oops. Sorry. I was a dead soldier.
Good. Commissioner Ling?
Yes, sorry.
Commissioner Perschbacher?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolles?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gillis?
Yes.
Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Onto announcements on city-related issues and new business. Commissioner Ling?
I just want to make a brief announcement. I was notified by the Office of Study Abroad at CMU, and this is through the, because I'm on the City Committee, the International Relations Council, and one of the things we've been working on is, is more coordination between events at Central and, and events within the city. And as part of that, they sent me a notice on a passport fair that they're going to be sponsoring, the Office of Study Abroad, on Wednesday, February 20th, in the Isabel Room at Bovee Center, and the director of the program, Jen, even, even if, wanted the public outside of the university to know, this is open to anybody. And if there's anybody who is thinking about traveling abroad and needs a passport and would like to have a convenient way to be able to go and get their passport processed, they would be able to do it on February 20th at Bovee Center.
Assuming the government doesn't shut down.
Well, that's true.
Cross our fingers. Anyone else? One, sort of a question. Nancy, do you want to collect these confidential things at the end of the meeting? Is that what the new?
No, that just came in late today, so I wanted to make sure you saw it, but we don't need those back.
Okay, because it had confidential stamped all over it. Okay.
Commissioner Ling?
I would just like to mention, I appreciated the letter that we got on dealing with snow and ice on the streets, and I think we might want to review that policy, but I, but that's not meant in any way as a criticism of the Department of Public Works, because I have seen many, many trucks out. This has been, obviously, a very challenging winter, and I'm glad I'm not one of, I'm not responsible for keeping the streets clean, so I do want to thank the Department of Public Works for the work that they've done, that they've done on this. And I think they probably also would appreciate our taking a look at that policy, particularly as we get to maybe the capital improvement budget, as we, as we're discussing that, and talk about when perhaps it's time to, to take a look at that policy.
Commissioner Kulik?
Follow-up for that. John, what temperature does salt not work below? I mean, that, that's the issue, and you can put all the salt in the world out there, but when it's 25 below zero, it's not going to melt anything.
After it goes below about 20, it starts to lose its effectiveness. Below 15, it's...
It's useless.
Not much there.
Thank you.
Well, moving on. This isn't a time for a public comment on any city-related business. Please come up and state your name and your address, and you'll have five minutes. Seeing no one, I will close this.
Wait, wait, you had a hand up back there.
Hello, my name is Brendan Lieberg. Address 4300 Collegiate Way, Room 231A. I'm just a concerned citizen. I came to the meeting over the medical marijuana policy and what was going to be handled to it, and I agree with what was being said here publicly, that there's a lot of people in town that are concerned about it, that are concerned that a larger corporation who isn't necessarily as concerned with the needs and requirements necessarily of the medical patients in town will be, if those will be met by a corporate entity, and more, more so than somebody who's local, who's been here their whole lives. So, I just wanted to come forward and offer my opinion, I guess, in terms of that, and that I've been talking to a lot of my friends who are medical marijuana patients, as I am myself, and I would like to see a more homegrown approach taken to it that I think would better serve the patients, certainly.
My name is Avery Barnes. I'm located at 1310 East Preston Road. I didn't want to say very much or lengthen this, but just to add some of my thoughts to the lottery issue, and as a resident of Mount Pleasant for the past nine, 10 years, and I'd like to, I'd like to see, well, I understand that you all have your obligations to protect interests and things, but I'd like to see Mount Pleasant be a model for a local businesses, but to be able to provide a product, to much-needed individuals who can benefit, it would really be unfortunate to, to have, say, one door open and then to suddenly be drowned out by people with deep pockets, so to speak. I can, I know, I can imagine many individuals who've been fighting this fight for even two decades. To be able to provide people with what they need when they need it in a way that, well, I don't have all the elegant words to, to really express, but I want to thank everybody for considering all the many voices, and I'd like to add my encouragement to, to those small, local businessmen and women who are still trying to find and fit their way in to where they are needed, so, thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission? Seeing none, I will close this public hearing or public comment section. We'll move into a recess for a closed session, and then we will come back later to, for
Is the closed session going to be down here?
Yes.
Yep.
Do I have any? No one? Um...
So the commission is reconvening now?
Ready, Steve?
Yep.
Okay.
The call is reconvened to the February eleventh meeting. And then we have item twenty-five. Commissioner Koolit?
I move to approve the labor agreement with the employees represented by the Command Officers' Association and the Patrol Officers' Association to expire on December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one, as recommended and authorized by the mayor and authorized the mayor and the clerk to sign all necessary documents.
Support.
Commissioner Koolit?
Who supported that?
Commissioner.
A few hands up.
Yeah, I got a second by Commissioner Tolles.
I'd like to thank the bargaining associations and the city staff for this agreement. It shows that we can continue to work together as a team to move the city forward. And I think it's a fair agreement for both the city and the employees represented by the associations. I will be supporting this.
I would echo Commissioner Koolit's comments that I'd like to thank staff and the union bargaining union for really coming together and, you know, meeting us where we wanted to meet on our pension and retirement benefits. And as we said back in December, you know, the city is an organization, is a big group, and there's a lot of opinions and there's a lot of different views, but we came together and we're going to move forward. With any other comments? All those in favor of the motion support by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed, the motion passes unanimously.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.